Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 6th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign-up sheets this evening that were in the foyer. One is a sign-up sheet if you're speaking, the other is a sheet for attendees of these hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding these cases, please sign in on one of the sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You can silence your cell phones at this time, too.
[laughter]
You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath. Please speak close to the microphone, and as I say, silence your cell phones. We thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening, we have just one case. That is for a concept site plan number C E S P 23-0381 for the MedStar Shaw Bean Medical Center expansion. They actually requested is a review of a concept site plan for a 53,994 square feet outpatient care center. After that, we'll entertain any new business, followed by adjournment. I'll let the board members introduce theirselves, starting on the left.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Good evening, Lynn Delahay.
John Brown.
Michael Brown.
Okay, also with us this evening, from the county staff, from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, we have their director, Jessica Andrich, their planner. Number four is Brandy Glenn, and their senior administrative coordinator is Jessica Birch. Thank you, Jessica. Also, supporting county staff in attendance this evening is our deputy county attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser, from the Department -- excuse me, from the Department of Public Works, their director, Jim Gotch, and their engineer, three, Jesse Harper, Kristi Ho -- oh, I don't know if Kristi's here tonight, but Anna Wells is always here from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission. From our director of economic development, Chris Casalemas, and his development facilitator, Ben Cohen. Our video media producer this evening is Amy Carter, and Andrew Beckman might be back in there, I haven't seen him. Did everybody have a chance to review the April 22nd minutes that we had?
Yeah.
Any discussion additions? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve them.
No mode.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Brown, a second from Ms. Delahay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Okay, aye. Moving right along, as I say, our first case of the evening. Anybody that will be testifying this evening or have statements during public testimony, if you'd stand at this time, and I'll get everybody sworn in. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, when we last left off, staff had given their presentation. I'll ask them if there was anything else that you wanted to add to your staff presentation?
No, we don't.
Okay, so I asked the applicant to come up. At that time, we were going through some items. We asked you to bring somebody here that could talk to us about the traffic, which seemed to be the height of the evening, and we'll take it from there. If I could get both your names and business addresses, please.
Good evening. Joe Kajewski with COA Barrett 100, Zip Sale Drive, Prince Frederick, Maryland, 20678.
And Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting, 645 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, Suite 214, Savannah Park, Maryland, 21146.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time this evening, and as Mr. Thompson relayed, I'm not going to re -- go through the previous presentation, understanding and apologize was not here last meeting, but understand the main point was questions about traffic and specifically safety of the site access and intersection there. So, I brought Mike along to speak to the traffic study and provide some backup to that and ask any -- answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you, and I would also like to apologize for not being here at the last hearing. I had a conflict that evening and couldn't make it, but happy to be here this evening.
Could you speak as close to Mike or?
Yes, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring it up close to you if you can.
Gotcha. Again, apologize not making the last hearing, but happy to be here and answer questions this evening.
Okay.
And with that, we prepared a little PowerPoint presentation, and I'd just kind of like to walk this, walk through this with you. So, the traffic impact analysis was reviewed and approved by both the State Highway Administration and the county. The county reached out after we received approval from the state numerous times, not only before the last hearing, but also subsequent to the last hearing. There were numerous outreaches, communications between Jonathan McLough at State Highway Administration and county officials, and the county -- the state has reiterated that they have approved the traffic study. There was no consideration for a median acceleration lane to go north on Route 235, and it meets their guidelines. They have approved the study. DPWT has confirmed that the traffic study satisfies the zoning ordinance, Section 70.7.3 that requires level of service C or better in village centers. The intersections will all operate at level of C or better, therefore, they satisfy the zoning ordinance. We did look at queuing and operations at the study intersections. There was a question subsequent to the last hearing whether we could prepare a simulation to show how it would work. This simulation model, the software, it's called Synchro Software. It does not model a two-stage movement at a divided highway. Two-stage movement being somebody pulls up to the stop sign, they stop, they look for a gap in southbound traffic, they find a gap, they pull into the median, they stop, they look to the south, wait for a gap in northbound traffic, and then they move forward. The software doesn't allow people to pull into the median and wait for a gap. It keeps them at the stop sign until there's a gap in both directions, and they can make the movement all at once. It really is not an appropriate tool, it just, it doesn't show the proper simulation. So, the median is 42 feet wide. That allows vehicles to wait in the median for a gap in southbound traffic until they can cross and access the northbound lanes. There is enough room in the median for two vehicles to stack. If you could go to the next page, please. And I'll talk more about stacking in the median, but there was some discussion about safety. So, intersection site distance and stopping site distance far exceeds the ASHTO requirements. ASHTO is the American Association of Highway and Transportation Officials, and they have kind of the bible of highway design, how, how much intersection site distance should be, stopping site distance, what the design criteria would be, and then State Highway and DPW have their own guidelines that are kind of build off of the ASHTO requirements. So, there's way more site distance out here than is needed for people to be able to see oncoming traffic, see gaps in traffic, and safely pull into, into traffic. There were some of the discussions subsequent to the last hearing with the State Highway. The question was put, is a median acceleration lane warranted? There really are no warrants for a median acceleration lane. There are, the State Highway has warrants for right turn lane, for a left turn lane, for an acceleration lane if you're turning right out of the site to go southbound on 235. They have warrants for those. They don't have a warrant for a median acceleration lane. Oftentimes, you look at the intersection and you determine if there are going to be failures, if there are going to be warrants for signalization, and a median acceleration lane can be a tool that's implemented to negate the need for a war -- for a traffic signal. State Highway doesn't like to put signals in if they don't have to, and if it is warranted, they might want to see the median acceleration lane because then they wouldn't have to stop northbound 235. You can, if you drive up and down 235 and you go further up where 5 comes back into 235, I think that's a signal that doesn't stop the northbound direction of 235. And there are a bunch of them on Route 24 through Calvert County, and so, in this case, the intersection doesn't meet the warrants for signalization, and there really are no warrants for consideration for a median accel. Safety and crashes can, and this is from ASHTO, directly from ASHTO. Safety and crashes typically are separated into three groups. One is human influences and driver behavior, such as if somebody's texting, drinking and driving, speeding, not paying attention, those types of things. The second is vehicular influence, and that might be, you know, car, brake failure, or tires that are running with low tread, and the car hype, planes on water, and skids out of control, things like that. And then roadway influences. Roadway influences are the design criteria that ASHTO and State Highway carry forward. Site distance, turn lanes, is it designed to meet those standards? And in this case, it is designed to meet those standards. We can't influence driver behavior. You know, people are going to sometimes do stupid things behind the wheel. You can't engineer for that. And so, again, based on a review of this intersection, it does not meet the warrants for signalization, and then I do have, well, I had a diagram for a median acceleration lane, but it didn't make it into the exhibit. It just didn't look appropriate, so. The design vehicle, I understand there was some discussion at the last hearing about large trucks using this, or trucks with trailers using this, and not being able to stack in the median. ASHTO also has discussion about what is the proper design vehicle. This is a medical office building. An automobile is the design vehicle for this. It's a predominant vehicle that you're going to see coming in and out of the site. If this were a distribution center or something of those lines, then a truck, a larger tractor trailer, might be the appropriate design vehicle. In this case, it would just be automobile. ASHTO guidance on automobiles is that their maximum length is around 20 feet. That's about what a large-size pickup truck would be. Industry data indicates the average vehicle length is around 15 feet, and again, the median here is 42 feet wide, which would be able to stack two vehicles. So, two vehicles could come across southbound, sit in the median, wait to turn, and go north. And I have a photo of that on the next page. There are adjacent traffic signals, a signal to the north at St. John's Road, and a signal to the south at Airport View Drive. Those signals do create gaps in northbound and southbound traffic, and if you sit and you wait and you watch, you will see the gaps that are created every time that cycles through the intersection. And, next slide, please. The image on the left was taken at 2:09 PM on November 8th, 2023. This is off-peak, but it was one of the times we observed two vehicles stacking in the median. They come out of the site, and they're waiting for a gap in northbound traffic to be able to merge in with northbound traffic. The image on the right-hand side was taken at 4:36 on November 8th, 2023. That, the peak 15 minutes throughout the entire 24 hours of the day occurred from 4:30 to 4:45 PM. So, this image was taken during the peak 15 minutes of the entire day. There, it was observed that there was about a maximum of three to four vehicles stacked at the stop sign exiting the site. And again, that was the maximum queue. On average, it was one to two vehicles. They would wait sometimes 10 to 20 seconds, sometimes, I think, the longest I observed was maybe a minute, minute and a half they waited for a gap, and then it cleared out pretty quickly. Next slide, please. So, to summarize, the traffic study was found to satisfy the zoning ordinance. The intersections are deemed adequate based upon the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and therefore, should be approved based on traffic. The traffic study was approved by both the state and the county. The state confirmed numerous times that the study was adequate. Queuing and operations are adequate with the proposed striping, which has been approved by the state and the county, which is to add striping on the driveway exiting the site to better delineate the left and the right turn lane exiting the site. Currently, there's limited to no striping, and so, people have to kind of figure out where they need to be on their own, and so, we suggested adding some bark, pavement markings to make it more apparent where those lanes are. And again, intersection meets site distance and all design requirements, so that's, that's all I have in my presentation, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, buddy, you have any questions?
I have a couple. Mr. Lenhart, I'm sure it's State Highway, but they're the ones that would require a northbound acceleration lane if it was?
If, if they deemed our study to be inadequate, and there were failures that required it, they would have required a median acceleration lane.
What are some of the fail, what, what triggers that? Since there's no warrants for an acceleration lane, what triggers that?
It could be a number of different things, and it could be unavailability of gaps on 235, and now, the signals to either side of this do create gaps, and they create it every, every two minutes or so, creates a pretty substantial gap in traffic while it allows side street at St. John's and the side street at Airport View to have green time, and that stops the main road, provides those gaps. So, that would be one possibility. The second would be, is if the left turns out of the site are so heavy that it warrants a signal, then the median acceleration lane could be advantageous to eliminate the need to signalize northbound 235. You'd, you'd stop southbound 235 to let the northbound lefts in, let the north, or let the left turns out of the site to use the median acceleration lane to get up to speed and then merge into traffic, and you would not have to stop northbound 235. That's not the case here. It's not, it's not warranted. The site doesn't connect to anything else. There's no potential for, you know, any connections to anything that would add traffic. It's not a public street, and this doesn't preclude the ability to add that later in the future if, if it ever does become needed, so.
But, there are, I can, I can think of at least one or two that have an acceleration lane going in whatever direction, north or south, where neither side stops, where the south or the north doesn't stop. So, it doesn't always have to be a stop, a stoplight on one or the other.
Right. There are places where that has been done. I worked for State Highway Administration back in the 90s for about 10 years, and I can think of several places, particularly in Calvert County, where that was installed, where signalization was warranted based on the traffic volumes in both directions of 235, but when you put the median acceleration lane in, the warrants were no longer met, and the signal was not needed. And so, in this case, the warrants aren't met anyway, so you don't need that to preclude the installation of a signal.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? Mr. Lenhart?
Before I get into this, yes, I, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Could you speak closer to the microphone?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
The warrants you said for a light, to put a light, or shall we say, a left turn light merge system like we're talking about up at the halfway house or that area, or just the two that you outlined there? Is that it? Is there a question of how many cars are coming up in the queue and that kind of situation, too?
You, do you mean?
I mean, what's, I guess you keep using the term warrant, or?
Sure.
I just want to know what the criteria is. It was implied that there were eight or 10 in our last meeting.
Yeah.
So, I just would like for everybody in the public to understand what those eight or 10 criteria are.
Good question. There's the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a national publication that all jurisdictions use when determining whether signalization is needed or not. It has nine warrants. Warrant one is called the eight-hour warrant. You have to have eight hours of the day that has a minimum amount of traffic volume on the main line and on the side street, and there's a variety of different ways you look at it, but it has to meet for eight hours, and, and this intersection.
What do you mean by minimum? In this intersection, what would it have to be?
Well, there, there are a minimum amount of volumes, like you'd have to have 50 to 70 turns out of the site every hour for eight hours, and, and this site, bear with me for a second.
There was 50 to 70 turns for each, for each hour is what you're saying, as opposed to just 50 to seven in a, in a peak period?
The eight-hour warrant says that for eight hours the day, you have to have at least 50 left turns out of the site on the northbound 235 for eight hours, 52 vehicles per hour for eight hours.
Okay.
This doesn't even have 52 hours out during the peak hour, so it doesn't meet that warrant.
I understand.
Second warrant is called the four-hour warrant, and it's got a different set of volumes that you need to meet for a minimum of four hours a day.
So, that number goes up, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and, yes, that number goes higher, and it does not meet that warrant. Warrant three is the peak hour warrant. That's used at manufacturing plants. When you have a very large facility with thousands of employees, they all get off at 5 o'clock, and it's a nightmare getting out. So, that's the peak hour warrant. Then there are several others that are, like a network warrant, a systems warrant, and a couple of things that really don't apply. There's a railroad crossing warrant, a pedestrian warrant, there's a crash data warrant, where, and the crash data warrant requires a minimum of five crashes within a 12-month period that are correctable by signalization, but it also has to meet certain volumes, and this, this doesn't meet the volumes that would satisfy that warrant, and I also am not aware that there are five accidents within a 12-month period that are credible.
Is that including stupid also?
[laughing] I guess you could put stupid in that category.
Okay, I just didn't know whether you were saying it was more because of design as opposed to being flat-out stupid.
Yeah. And, and that's it. There, there are some, again, that are not really applicable in this situation. The, the first two warrants, one or two are, and, and the crash data warrant are really the ones that State Highway relies more heavily upon to determine if signals are needed.
Now, when you do your study, does the accident figures somehow get incorporated in there over the period of time?
We don't have access to the crash data. That's something that State Highway holds very tightly, and so, we don't have access to that.
Well, the state police and the county people have it right here.
State police and the county would.
And they'll provide it to anybody who asks.
Yeah, and I guess we could have gotten it, but the crash data wouldn't even really apply here because, again, the crash warrant requires a minimum amount of volume, similar to the eight-hour, or, yeah, warrant one, which is the eight-hour warrant, very similar to that, and this doesn't, not even come close to meeting that one.
So, it's the volume rather than the crashes?
The crash warrant is a combination.
Well, anyway, don't quite understand that, but what about speed?
Uh, speeds.
How does that figure into your?
Speeds apply if.
If it's a 45, or a 35, or a 55?
Yeah.
What, how does that figure into these studies?
That's a good question. If the speeds, if the operating speeds on the main line are less than 40, then the volumes have to be higher to justify the need for the signal. If the speeds are greater than 40, then the volumes can be lower to justify the need for the signal, because higher volumes equates to a little more difficulty getting out, you know, that, that type of thing. So, so they allow for that in the data.
Oh, I've got some more, but, oh, in the evening, you, in your study, you indicated there was a level of service of D, but, but the morning peak was C. So, how does C and D average to C as opposed to averaging to D-plus, or?
Yeah, let me just clarify.
Or something that's in the negative side? I mean, it's like, is that what, how do you average that, is what I'm saying?
The morning peak hour is a B, as in boy.
You had a C and a D on one of your.
And then the evening peak hour, the driveway at 235, it's a D if it's just a one-lane approach, but when you stripe it for a two-lane approach like we're suggesting, it's a C.
Now, the question I have is when you put a two-lane approach in there, you're putting two cars side by side, therefore, impeding their ability to see whether they're looking, whichever, in other words, if you're in the left lane, you look right, you can't see.
Sure.
If you're in the right lane, looking left, you can't see because of the other vehicle.
It's a good comment.
So, how does that really translate to a safer environment?
The vehicle that's in the right lane is going to be turning right.
Yes, but he has to see to be able to turn right.
Well, there is an acceleration lane as well that they can utilize, so they don't have to turn immediately into the through lane.
So, is it going to be like, what do you call those little triangles where you force them off to the right into the merge line?
Uh, no, that won't be there, and, and, I mean, so, let me start with the vehicle in the left turn lane.
Yeah.
Will have a clear sight line to the left. They can see unobstructed to people traveling southbound.
Okay.
Uh, they're going to be looking at a tighter angle to the northbound 235 traffic, and really, they just kind of need to see what's in the median to be able to get across southbound into the median. They don't have to see through traffic on south, on northbound.
On south, I mean, northbound, right?
On northbound side, until they get in the median and try to enter the northbound traffic stream.
Okay.
The person turning right, I guess if there's a Brink's truck, or, you know, a box truck or something that pulls up close, the right-turning vehicle wouldn't be able to see around, but I, my personal experience, you know, and I think you probably would agree, you're not going to just turn blindly into a lane. You're going to wait until they move, you're going to inch out past them.
That's what my question was. If they're there and you're waiting for the left guy to move, you're, you're back to a single lane again.
Well, yes, but in this case, you do have the acceleration lane, so you can turn right, and these, these are people, you know, they're employees, they're people that probably come on a repeat basis to the medical center, and so, most of them are going to know that there's an acceleration lane, they can use that to get out, and also, not every vehicle's going to block their sight. There's going to be, if you've got two equal cars, you're going to be able to see around, see through, and see what's coming.
The, the numbers that were going to increase from 241 to 325 to a total of 565. How did you calculate the numbers for that queue? Because obviously, there are a lot of patients. You've got a staff question, and that hasn't been broken out as to how much of the 565 spaces will be staff, i.e. eight-hour parking, as opposed to, shall we say, appointment parking, which would be? which would be probably those spaces would be rotating with three or four or five different cars during the day. I just wondered how you generated and built your queue for that, for this model in your study.
Sure. And so if this is a parking question, onsite parking?
Well, it, but it came there, and if, if they're planning for that, and they ultimately get to that, that means those, there's only one way those cars can exit. And if they're rotating in that queue, you have a lot of cars exiting throughout that eight-hour period.
Right.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. So I, I think, well, the question I'm hearing has two components to it. One is, how do we calculate the parking? And I assume that was per code?
No, I really wasn't going after that.
Wasn't, wasn't the parking?
I was going after.
Okay.
You've got those spaces and assuming, certainly at the existing one right now.
Sure.
I think all of us in the room know that if we're having an appointment between 10 and 2, you're almost parking in the woods to find a space.
Okay.
But so with the expanded parking, but these spaces, people have appointments that maybe fifteen-minute appointments, or it'd be probably an hour that they consume in the, in the area and then try to exit. So a given space is really being rotated four or five times, which multiplies the number of vehicles that are exiting or entering.
Okay, I, I.
That's where I'm coming from.
I, I think I understand the question now. So when we develop the traffic volumes that are generated by the proposal, we use the Institute for Transportation Engineers. They have a trip generation manual that includes land uses from hundreds of different land uses, residential neighborhoods, office buildings, medical office, retail of different sites and types and sizes, fast food, gas, convenience. They have a medical office use, and we use that medical office land use category out of the trip.
What do you do? Plug in a number of?
You plug in a number.
Issues versus staff or?
You, you plug in the square.
How do you do it?
Square footage of the facility.
It's just square footage?
Yep, and it spits out a number. It's based on, and it spits out the number of trips that will be generated by that building, and it's based on empirical data. The, it's, it's actual traffic counts that have been conducted at other medical office buildings. That information is reviewed, confirmed, and compiled into the trip generation manual. So planners, when a proposal comes in, you can use this manual, and you can say, I've got, what, a hundred thousand square foot building? And the manual will say it's going to generate X number of trips in the AMP, Y number of trips in the PMP, and that's based on real-world data at other sites. And so it's, it's not.
It doesn't break a category of medical down, so you don't know whether it's patient or other types of medical treatments, maybe an hour or two.
Right, it doesn't say you've got X number of employees, X number of patients. It's not that.
They do the employees and patients, and that's the way they do it.
Well, it's just, it gives you the overall number of trips. So from a transportation perspective, you just need to know how many trips are going through the intersection and when. And that's what we study during the peak periods. So it doesn't necessarily matter. If you've got a hundred people coming out, it doesn't matter if it's an employee, or a visitor, or a patient.
But it, it depends on whether that spot is rotating a lot during the day as opposed to the eight-hour employee.
So the, the parking.
The end of the day is one thing.
The, the, the rotating is captured in the traffic volumes based upon the trip generation manual. The ITE also has a parking generation manual. That shows that the peak parking times do occur sometime between, usually like 11 to 1. Midday is kind of the, the peak. Late morning, early afternoon is the peak. When you've got most staff and patients and visitors, that's when the site is most filled up. And that presumably is when you get more turnover, but that's when also the traffic along Route 235 is not as high. The volumes are lower, you don't have peak hour traffic on the roads. And so, you know, that's when we studied it during the peaks. And again, it does.
Now, how did you, when you study it during the peaks, you were studying at 24, and then you just picked out the areas that had the higher volume?
We do.
In other words, how did you? I see in your study you refer to peak, but how is that determined?
Sure. We did, on November 8th of 2023, we did three-hour traffic count in the morning peak hour from 6:30 to 9:30. And we, we, we do it in fifteen-minute intervals, and we look at a rolling sixty minutes within that three-hour period. And we determined the peak sixty minutes. That was from 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning. That becomes our peak study because that's when the traffic is.
Is the heaviest.
Heaviest. We do the same thing in the evening from 4 until 7, and we determined that the peak was 4:15 to 5:15.
But what about the other times in the day that the cars are rotating through? You, you weren't getting a picture of that, were you?
Traffic is substantially lower on Route 235 during the off-peak than it is during the peak.
What about the volume of exiting?
They're, they're a little bit higher during the midday, but it's not substantial. The traffic in and, in and out of the site is a little higher later in the morning.
While the main road is lighter.
Main road is very low, or not very low. It's still got a good bit of traffic on it, but it's much lower than the actual 7:15 in the morning and 4:15 in the afternoon.
Okay, I think I've been squirreling you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Lenhart?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Could the lights be timed differently at St. John and Airport View to maybe allow more breaks on 235?
That's possible. State Highway Administration maintains the signals. They control the timing. A request could be made to take a look at it and see if that's necessary. Or.
Seemed like we were talking about stacking. It seemed like, and people waiting for track, if it could just be varied, the timing on St. John and Airport View may help the situation a lot.
It, it's possible. It's possible it could. Now, my observation and observing the intersection and the operations and the queuing and the delay, as long as it takes people to get out, is most people coming out of that site get out quicker than if it would be signalized. If you put a signal up, you're probably going to have a two, two to two-and-a-half-minute cycle length, and you'd pull up, wait for a green signal to be able to get out of the site, and you're going to have to wait a minute or two before it turns green. Most people don't have to wait, or, or they wait much less than that. There are, there were some during the peaks that looked like it would, it was a minute or two for them to get out, which is about what it would take if it were signalized.
Okay, can I sneak in with two more questions? One thing, let's see. First of all, how, how is it tripped, or how is it monitored that if traffic increases through time? In other words, 10, 15, 20 years from now, okay? How is it, how is the system, is there, is there a system to trip it? Or is it just when some, the last guy to put a exit on 235 is the guy gets stuck with having to put this improved light situation up? I mean, how do you come about, shall we say, putting the light in if you, if it was needed?
If there is ever more development on this site in the future, it would, another traffic study would be required. It'd have to be looked at, go through the.
And that developer would get stuck with this light, is what you were saying?
If it's required, if it meets the warrants and something is required, that would be the case, and.
But it wouldn't be State Highway putting it in?
Uh, no.
I'm talking about the, who's putting the scratch up?
If, if nothing ever develops on this site beyond this current proposal?
Yeah.
It'll never meet warrants for a signal.
Yeah, but if it is?
Then the next.
Where does the burden of financing, the light, fall?
That would be, that would be looked at, at that next application. There would be a study if it shows warrant, improvements are needed, warrants are met, whatever. State Highway and your staff at DPW would review those studies and make recommendations for whatever those results are.
And then playing off of Mr. Brown's comments, how would you, if, if the idea of adjusting those lights, how would that be initiated? Would our local public works, Mr. Gotch, be asking that question of the state?
Yes.
How would that go about?
That's what I would recommend. Mr. Gotch would reach out to District Five Traffic and ask them to take a look at it and see if there's some minor adjustments to the signal timing that could make some improvements.
Thank you. I swear I'll shut up now.
On this, sir? Mr. Kudjaski?
There, there was a couple here last time, and I noticed they're not here tonight, but they told me they were going to watch. Their property backs up to the, let's see, if you're heading northbound 235, where the new building is being built, and then, of course, you have the Smecko power lines. They have that farm that's on the back. They were just asking about the buffer that will be behind the building. How, how close will you be clearing up to the property line on that?
Don't know exactly where that.
If you're looking at your new building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm looking at the site plan, off of the, off of the site plan here. And right down there toward the bottom at the.
Bottom left-hand corner of the site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're, at the closest point, we're within 25 feet of our property line? And then you have the hundred, I believe it's a hundred-foot Smecko right-of-way.
Of course, the Smecko right, I guess what they're asking, since the Smecko right-of-way generally stays mowed down, now, I know they let it grow up to a certain point, and then they call Penline, and they, they mow it all down again. But they were wondering how much buffer would be back there in that, toward the rear of that building and such.
From the, from the building to the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Let me see if I can find it. I'd say between, and I apologize, don't have a scalable drawing, between 75 and 100 feet from that closest corner to the property line.
And you're going to leave, leave the trees and such that are up there now?
We're, we're clearing to within 25 feet of the property line to grade and construct for the building, put some utilities in, storeyard management, et cetera. So we have about 25 feet of existing vegetation to remain outside the LOD.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Okay. All right, well, then, at this time, y'all have anything else you want to add? Mr. Kudjaski, anything you need to add?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All good. Okay. I'll open it up to public testimony. I have one person, Mr. Cowan. Would you like to come up? Do you have anything you would like to say? And I believe I got to swear you in. Could you give us your name and address, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Troy Cowan, 2141 South Essex, Lexington Park, the old man of Lexington Park. It's a pleasure to, to speak to you again. Very briefly, I speak in favor of this project. I think it's good for the county. It's good for the economics of the county. It's good for the public health care of the county. And it will be a business development center in many ways for the county. I fully support it. Thank you for bringing it. I think it's incumbent upon the county to plan for this kind of growth and develop the infrastructure to support it. And I would just like to bring to mind that this is not the only development that's being considered for this part of Great Mills. There's the YMCA, there's at least two apartment complexes I'm aware of. And for this project to, to bear the entire burden of traffic planning, given those other things that are coming around the corner, I don't think that's fair. I think it's incumbent upon the county to bring pressure to the powers that be in the state to help us develop the infrastructure so that we can provide for our residents. We're a planning entity. We need to look 20 to 30 years out. Just looking at one project within the next two to three years is a mistake. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Cowan? Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else? Mr. Evans? I didn't remember swearing you in, Mr. Evans. Did I?
No, you did not.
So first, raise your right hand, sir. Do you declare an affirmative of the penalty perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Name and ad.
Nice to see you all. Different perspective out here as opposed to looking to you. I'm up that way.
Can we get your name and address, please?
I got ahead of myself. Merle Evans, 44378 Fenwickum Road, Tall Timbers, Maryland. So, a couple of things. I'm not here necessarily supporting or in opposition to this. I think it's good for the county. I think it'll be helpful for the county. That said, this is a dangerous intersection. It's not the only dangerous intersection in St. Mary's County. The state has created a 25-mile racetrack. And it matters not that you go to a, a traffic light. On my way here tonight, making a left from 249 to Route 5, number one in the lane with, with a green light, four people ran a red light going onto Route 249. That said, you can do very little about bad behavior with regard to people driving. I drove past this intersection this morning, 10:45. There were five people in the median. They were all like matchsticks. I don't think anybody had any idea what the hell anybody was doing, but they were there. And on the way back, there were four. I don't have an answer to this other than to say that the planning commissions, unfortunately, folks, you don't plan for very little. You're like a baseball team, and all you have is a catcher. Everything's thrown to you, and you guys get to catch it. Guys get to respond to it. And that puts you in a sort of an onerous position because you're doing exactly what you should be doing. You should be questioning these, these folks. You should be questioning these people up front. That's what you do. That's the only thing you have as, as a tool. You have really nothing else. And the other thing I'd like to say is that I'm, I heard a comment by a county commissioner yesterday that he, he shared that planning commissioners weren't, weren't appointed by them to get in the way of development. I spent a hell of a lot of time up there, and I don't recall ever getting in the way of development. All you folks out here, and, you know, when you're sitting in front of us, we've always tried to do the very best that we could that was, that was before us. I take exception to a, a sitting county commissioner making that comment. I think it's misguided, and I think it's inappropriate, and I think it's down, it's just absolutely incorrect. It's wrong. In this case tonight, you really don't have any tools as a planning commission to deny this applicant, in my view. Unless the state were to come forward and, and decide that there was something they could do for an acceleration lane heading north on 235, that would be a, a way that you might be able to, to help. And the other thing that might be, would be possibly helpful, would that be that the developer, and this has happened time after time, that a developer proffers those changes? You can't require them. It's called extortion. You can't do that. On the other hand, you know, Charlotte Hall recently, we had development, developers that proffered changes because it was in their best interest and the community's best interest. And, and to be honest with you, I think, I think this, this development will certainly help St. Mary's County, and I'm not here to say that they should or they shouldn't. I'm just saying, those are the only two, only two mechanisms that we have right now to address this condition with regard to Route 235. The folks that are trying to make a left-hand turn out of that, out of this development heading north, they have to make sure southbound traffic has cleared in both of those lanes. And I'm sure you all are, are decent drivers. If a driver, if a car is coming down the street and there's an adjacency, and you don't see that car that's in the shadow of the car in that near lane? an adjacency, and you don't see that car that's in the shadow of the car in that near lane, it's, it's absolutely, can be disastrous. And if you're making a left onto 235, heading north, unless you accelerate, and I mean, not slightly accelerate, but accelerate, the people that are coming on this drag strip heading north, there's no way in the world you'll get out of their way. So I'm, I'm back to my original comment that this is a dangerous intersection, as it sits today, and no matter what your traffic study says, or no matter what the state says, it's not going to change the fact that this is a dangerous intersection. And it's, again, it's not the only intersection in the county that's like this. And I think, infrastructurally, Troy's right. If we had done and would do a better job with regard to master planning and town centers and village centers and the rest, infrastructurally, we would be in a much better place than where we are. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Evans? Thank you, sir.
You looking at me?
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'll close it, close public testimony. And is there any comments you wanted to make on either, either one of the comments before you?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Then I'll close that part, and I'll bring it back to the board for the deliberations. Now, I put you on the spot, Mr. Lenhart, but now we have Mr. Lenhart here tonight. We had a more thorough, I'll say, explanation of how both the state highway works and, and what, what goes into it to, to make this happen, and their, their thought processes that, that do that. I don't see any problem with the project. The project, there never was a problem with the project itself. That, that's a fine establishment right there. I think this board, most of this board was worried about the, the safety part of it. I hope we've got a lot of those questions answered this evening. 235 is never going to change, as, as one of our former members said, you know, that, that, it's, it's a fast road. It's 235. I mean, it's, what anybody from St. Mary's County knows, it's the fastest road in the county. Well, I don't know. There's another road that's taken over kind of that, if you read the papers in the last few weeks. So, but most, I'll say, people use the proper judgment, and with the, what you're going to do to improve the, the entrance exit in and out of there will, will help to get people across there. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Well, since I was unnamed, but quoted, I guess, in a lot of the articles over the last couple of weeks, I think the real issue, first of all, understand that a couple of weeks ago, all of us sat here and said the project itself is great. The real issue was that intersection. And with your being here tonight, and if you will, taking some of my grilling, as well as some of the other questions, you know, it's, it's been most helpful, and I think revealing too, to the public. And I, I have no objections to, you know, being in the positive here. I think Mr. Evans is absolutely right in his comments that we really do need to somehow, some way, get more involved in interactions with the state and the highway to figure out what we can do with some of our safety initiatives, like we were briefed on last time, and how that can be applied to the state highways in our county. But as far as this one's concerned, no, no problem.
Any other comments?
I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I really feel that the purpose of the board is not to rubber stamp proposed developments. Rules and regulations concerning development criteria, they should be considered, and they should not be considered absolute, but rather guidelines. The safety, welfare, and appearance is, is uppermost in our thought. It should be there. That's what we should be thinking about for, for the community. Pertaining to this case, there's already a history at that intersection. So regardless of what your formulas show, what numbers you plug in, numbers can be made to say whatever you want. That is a dangerous intersection, and I think Mr. Evans eloquently described that. We, we embrace the development of this program. We never, ever didn't want the building to be built. We want the state to be more proactive with us in the future, because this is a very highly developmental program that's going to happen in St. Mary's County. If we continue just to look at these little teeny pieces at a time, it's just going to impact in a negative way. I, I don't know, maybe a right turn only out of the facility would be an answer. I, I don't know, but the intersection really is dangerous. But Dr. Shaw, thank you for bringing that, bringing your facility there. I think that it's needed, and everyone in St. Mary's County can benefit from it.
What else? Well, I think we know how we feel, so if anybody, I'd like to have a motion if we could.
Make the motion?
You want to?
Okay.
In the motion of Concept Plan Number CSP 23-0381, MedStar Shaw Bean Medical Center Expansion Development, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that the objectives of Section 60.6 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance have been met, and noting that the reference project has met all requirements for concept approval, I move that the concept plan approval be approved with the following conditions. Those, we're still going to add those in. Well, it says, any road improvements, which would include that striping that you were talking about, will be concurrent, and additional 81 parking spaces will be mitigated by the 16,200-square-foot additional landscape.
Hold on a second. I have a motion. I have a second. Do this roll call. Mike Brown?
Aye.
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 And also vote aye. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Okay. Do we have any other business this evening? Okay, well, then I presume I will see y'all next week, is it not? Okay. I'll be back next Monday. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.